Good evening, everybody. Let's rise for the President of Allegiance. Roll call. The Board is at full complement tonight. Moving on to executive session announcements. There'll be an executive session following the meeting to discuss personnel. And we're up to public comment. Does anybody have any public comment? Hearing none, let's move on to the report of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Rubinowitz. We have a couple of discussion items this evening. The first one is really just for your information. Per the last board meeting, you had asked me to provide you with the information about the SROs, their protocols. And so in your board docs, I indicated both the MOUs with each police department, which are essentially the same. And there's a little bit of different wording, but the duties are essentially the same for each SRO. And I also included the daily schedules of the SROs. We work with the police chiefs to review this on a periodic basis. And most recently, I sat with Chief Wheatley, who's taken over Upper Potts Grove Police Department, and he's wonderful to work with and wants to enhance the program at Upper. And we sat and reviewed the schedule for the SRO at the middle school, which I've included here in your paperwork for you, so you can see that. It's also on the board docs. And also, just to remind you, the cost, you asked about the, I think you asked about the cost, which at Lower approximates to about $82,427 per year. It's subject to change based on their collective bargaining agreement at the station and the person who's in place and their years of experience and their benefit package. And Upper is approximating at $77,553 per year. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have, because this was your item that you had asked for.
Just a question concerning regarding specific incident situations where an officer might be in the area or called to the area if he's in the building. Can we have more detailed, not we as a board, but can the district work on creating more detailed plans to be proactive versus reactive? For example, if we have an emotional support student who's being addressed by our staff who are trained in that area and intervening appropriately, what an officer would do if he or she walks by, or if they're then called down to the scene, who takes over what? Just conversations with the police chiefs and different officers, that's kind of a concern. Thankfully, we haven't had any incident, but just to be proactive and maybe even some shared training, because the officer's training is different than the training our staff have if intervention's necessary. So kind of a shared dialogue in who would do what and that kind of thing.
Sure, I'd be happy to revisit that with them. We're planning to get together later this spring to look at some of our safety and security protocols in general. I do know that essentially, the building principal, the district administration is in charge, and they will ask police for assistance if they feel that they need police assistance. But other than that, it's typically our staff that would intervene first, in the case of a student that might be having an episode or something.
I'd also, this only marginally relates to the SRO-specific discussion, but I think that it's relevant, and now may be a good time to bring up something that I'd want to speak to you about, Mrs. Fiola. But, you know, we were in the news the last few months because of some incidents at a couple of different schools that were reported by Lower Potts Grove Township as part of their monthly commissioners' meeting where they, after their SRO report is made public. And I've had a few conversations with a few people about it, and I'm wondering out loud if rather than waiting for those reports to come from the SRO, there would be a way for us to be more proactive about how we report out to the public about these incidents. I'm going to use the incident where the child brought a knife to school. And there was a big, a lot of noise from the public, but there was also some very legitimate points that several members of the public made to me about wanting to use an opportunity, like a student bring a knife to school, to educate their children about what to do in those kinds of scenarios. And while we all agree that a knife isn't as serious as a gun, it's still a weapon, or it can be used as a weapon even if it's not deliberately intended to be one. So that just sparked for me a thought that I would at least bring it up with you to see if we could possibly be a little bit more proactive about these reports and not wait until it's read about in a report that isn't of our choosing. I think that really is the point that I wanted to make. You know, if there's context to an arrest at the high school, then better we provide the context than have to explain after the fact. I don't know what the right answer is, but I just wanted to raise that with you and maybe just put it in the food-for-thought bin for further discussion.
Well, I did write a, work with Michael, and we wrote a brief, so to speak, to explain to parents, you know, what we do and do not send alerts home for. I mean, typically, essentially, our guideline is we will send an alert home if students are affected, or if there is, we have to move them somewhere because we had a fire alarm, or a bomb threat, or, you know, something was interrupted in the course of their day. We had the alarm going off here for the construction project, so they were interrupted. If it's something that we're handling that doesn't pose a disruption or a safety issue per se to the student body, then we don't send that. We don't send information home, because we can't possibly send something home every single time something happens. So I would be more than happy to send that document that I drafted out. I thought it was, some board members had the opinion that that would just be fuel for the fire, so to speak. But if you would think that that would be prudent to do, then I'd be more than happy to send it home.
But I think that while every single thing that happens would be an administrative burden, I completely agree with you, you know, an arrest isn't an everyday occurrence, for example. You know, just as an example, it just seems like there's a line above which I think it would be prudent for us to not wait for the press to find out about it and then have to react when people get upset. And that's what, I guess where I'm coming from. It's more of a PR thing, perhaps, but also, you know, like I said, every time it happens, the thing that upsets the parents that I hear from isn't that the incident happened, it's that they didn't find out about it when it happened.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the question, though, is what things do you want reported? Because it's just continually going to happen on a daily basis. We have something that might happen that you're, I'm going to have, I don't see any other school districts doing that. I mean, we would be kind of an anomaly. But if that's what this board would like, then I think you're going to need to put some guidelines together, because it could, you know, it could be something that's shining a light that you don't want on the district.
Well-
And we try to keep student confidential information, if I'm, you know, announcing arrests and looking to see which student that was, and, you know, that just opens up another whole can of worms if you're making those announcements. So I, I mean, I think-
Fair enough. And I don't know-
Are you saying that you don't know the difference between something that is serious and likely to cause concern in the community and something that is an everyday occurrence? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that-
That you need specific guidance from us?
No, I'm saying that we do alert parents when we have an issue that might cause a significant disruption to the school day. But if, let me give you an example. If a child had a pocket knife in his bookbag and was on the bus, and then he got to school, and then the teacher found the bookbag, you know, the knife in the bookbag in an elementary school, and it didn't affect anything, it was handled, we wouldn't feel that that was necessary for us to send an alert home. Yet, we got a complaint from a parent because we didn't, and the reason for that is because it was in the Lower Potts Grove Police report. So I think what Rick's saying is, you know, all these things come out now in the report, you know, 30 days later sometimes. So do I need to go back and then, you know, clarify everything in the report? Or do I need to be sending alerts home every single time something happens? Because any time that the police are involved, that goes, the SRO's involved, it goes in their report at Lower Potts Grove, not at Upper Potts Grove.
I think that brings up a good point. I wonder, it seems to me oftentimes when a reporter's going to do an article on something, they research more to get more information and detail. I hear the point you're making, and it's a valid point, I believe. Things can be misconstrued, you know, if there's a charge for this or that, that, you know, like you say, it could have just been a pocket knife that got forgotten in a school bag, but the police report's not going to say that. I would ask of the media if they could ask for clarification, if they're going to be running a report, if they could ask for clarification or more detail, because, right, do we want to make something bigger than it is? Do we want to be sending out multiple press releases? It seems to me some of the ownership, and we don't have much say in this, but needs to be on the media and them doing an accurate and whatever, appropriate or whatever story, and getting the full story. Another thought, just a suggestion for the media, I believe, I don't believe there's any ill-will and ill-intent on Potts Grove, but if they, if they're going to be publishing, look, Lower Potts Grove does a great job in being open with their commissioners and what's happening in the schools and so forth. So instead of saying, well, this, this, and this happened at, you know, in Potts Grove Schools, if they did a comparison with the SROs between local school districts, that would give a different light on the story and a little more understanding of, well, no, Potts Grove isn't constantly having these issues that are abnormal. If anything, you know, our numbers, arrests and so forth are lower than other districts. So just some thoughts.
All right, well, I don't really think that, I think that the media reports the information that they get, and I don't think that they're doing anything wrong by doing so. I just think that we can do a better job at drawing the line in terms of what we report out and what we don't. And I don't know, I'm not saying that anybody has done anything wrong, I'm saying that we definitely have more than just a one-parent reaction when these reports come out. And it doesn't necessarily do us any credit. So maybe this is a policy committee discussion. I just wanted to raise it, that I've been thinking a lot about it, and I've heard from a lot of people. And every month, when that report comes out, it starts all over again. I just feel like we're on the back end of the news cycle when we could be on the front end of it, and that would be better. But I don't want to create an onerous reporting mechanism where every day you have to worry about the report to the media. I just feel like there should be a way to figure this out that isn't onerous, but also produces these backlash days when the Lower Potts Grove Commissioner report comes out, which, by the way, I don't think they report on the crimes in the township, just in the school. So go figure that.
Moving on to the second item, it's restorative practice. And, you know, we've had some conversation about hearing from the community, from teachers, that we have students in our district that are different from what they were years ago, more students that have social and emotional needs in the district, necessitating us to do some things differently and to be proactive in terms of training our staff in dealing with those types of students. And since Kate has taken over, and she's not here tonight, she had a family emergency, but since she's taken over, she and I have had a lot of conversation, talked with our cabinet and our district leadership team about what strategies we would want to put into place to try to begin to address this, because we've been addressing that, been addressing this need throughout the course of the year, but we want to continue to add strategies and be proactive in terms of how we're handling our professional development for staff and other strategies to help us. So a couple of things came to mind. One is that we're going to put in some very specific training for our para educators. They all have to have training, a certain number of hours per year. And on the off-years, we do the CPI training for them, which is their de-escalation and restraint. But we want to also create some other trainings for paras, and we're working with a TAC team at the IU and Patton to put that together for us. We're continuing to look at our school-wide positive behavior support, and we met with principals again today, talking about what we're doing to revisit that and to add some positives, to look at all the tiers, and make sure that we're continuing that conversation. So we have some summer time set up for that. We sent some students, some teachers and counselors to social thinking training, and we have a debrief session next week with them. I know you're aware of that, because we paid for it through the Health and Wellness Grant. So I want to debrief with the staff members that attended that and then figure out how we can spread that, the learnings that we had from that, and how we want to spread that learning, because we got some very positive initial feedback from the participants that went to the training, but I want to sit with them and listen to what they had to say about it. We're working on some additional training for our psychologists and our special education teachers, specific to writing evaluations, IEPs, and so on and so forth. We're looking at some training on poverty for our full staff, including our aides and our support staff. We were talking about that today, and we're using our grant funds to pay for some of that. And then the last piece that I have here on the board report for discussion is looking at some training in restorative practices. But I put a copy of what restorative practices is in your packet so that you could take a look at it, but it's really a national, international concept. And they use this in the justice system and education differently in different environments. And we want to look at it for our school system and what we would like to do to try to shift our culture to a more restorative environment. And when I spoke with the woman at the International Institute for Restorative Practices, she said it's really important to start with your administrative team and then some key leaders, like your guidance counselors, social workers, key teacher leaders that would be interested in this, and start the conversation there and then spread it through the organization. So looking at trying to get that training started this summer, and, which is why I bring it forward to you, and I'm asking for your discussion and approval. We have money in our Title II federal grant funds for professional development that we would use to pay for this training, and we feel that it's really important to get this started because of the students that we work with each day.
Are you looking for us to approve this tonight, Mrs. Fiola?
Well, it would be helpful, just so that we can save that, the dates, but I mean, I think that they would be willing to, you know, if I see that there's an interest here, which I'm hoping that there is, because it's really a renowned program. But we're looking to try to do this at the week right after we're out of school. In fact, after speaking with cabinet today and them checking with staff on availability, we think the 20th through the 23rd, those four days simultaneous, because it's a four-day training, would be best before we lose some people for vacations and so on. And I don't know if I want to wait till the 14th to get it approved for the 20, you know, we kind of have to plan to get this going. And if we want, if we want to start this conversation, we've got to get this training started first.
So who would be receiving this training?
The administrative cabinet. We're allowed up to 45 individuals, so I spread it out so that we have representation from each building. So our building administrator, our district administration, building administration, then we're tapping first our guidance counselors, we're looking at our social workers, and then the principals are tapping certain teacher leaders in each building that would either be a part of the SAP team, the SWBIS team, the Child Study team. And they wanted to identify some teacher leaders at each level that can start this conversation with us so that we can understand it together and then talk about how we might want to further this.
When is the last workday of the teachers?
The 16th.
So then they would be, we'd be asking them to come back?
Yeah, we have other training going on that whole week for different purposes.
Okay.
That's paid, this will be paid.
And then, just to clarify on the Title II funds?
Right.
These are use-it-or-lose-it funds, correct?
Yeah, well, a portion of it can roll over to the, into the next year. But we have additional funds that we were going to roll over, so we can use it now or use it later.
The use of these funds, therefore, wouldn't have an impact on our budget discussions?
No.
Or any decisions about taxes, correct?
No.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
My only concern is, the guy that this is based on, this Australian criminologist, he's asserted that reliance on punishment as a social regulator is problematic because it shames and stigmatizes wrongdoers, pushes them into a negative societal subculture, and fails to change their behavior. I don't want us, I don't think it's beneficial to get away from a system where we have choices and consequences. If this is, which I don't know how far this goes with that. So if you're starting with, you know, looking into it for the administrators and getting more information, I don't know that I'm comfortable just kind of making it a school program or way of doing things. But I would want to, personally, I'd want to hear more about the way they look at consequences and, you know, paying for your errors.
Well, it's not really about the consequences and the student code of conduct, it's about having conversations to work with families so that they can understand how to work with their child. It's about children having conversations in groups so they can understand each other's perceptions about how something happened. It's not the consequences that are changing, it's the teaching about what happened and why they made choices that they did, and how to get them to think differently about choices the next time. It doesn't really affect the student code of conduct in any way.
My, well, I guess you just started to explain what I was going to ask, was could you just kind of break it down into layman's terms, what this process is? And if we go through the, if we have everybody go through the training that you want to happen, what would the, what would the outcome be? What would the return on the investment be? Would there be some specific practices that you would want to implement? Or is there some number that you're trying to drive down? So what would, what is it, really? Because I read this, and I started to read it again, but it doesn't specifically define what restorative practices are. So if you could just simplify it and then tell us what the projected outcomes of the training are.
Well, this particular training, and the way the woman explained it to me, is that we really should have a good understanding of the four key components, which is introduction to restorative practices, using circles effectively, building community, and a formal proactive conferencing model, so that when you have families in a room for a conference, that you have a proactive way of talking through plans to get the child's behavior to be changing. And then an overview of the family group conferencing model, which is trying to help families better understand how to work with their own student when they have an issue going on, truancy, bullying, you know, and how then to get the family to start having conversation to try to change the behaviors that the child is exhibiting as opposed to enabling the behaviors. So this is about us as an administrative group and key people in each building understanding it, learning soup to nuts about the whole thing, and then talking about, well, how can we further this into our culture? Because essentially, other districts that are using this, you know, start small and then grow it out and try to transform their culture so that educators, aides, other people understand how to work and talk with families, how to talk with children. That's what we're trying to, we're trying to kind of make that change culturally through the district. I can't give you, it's not like a business model where I could give you a return on investment, so to speak, in terms of money, but what we're trying to do is we're trying to put things in place, strategies, to help strengthen and be positive about trying to get students changing, as opposed to saying, that child doesn't belong here, get out, or, you know, we can't help you, sorry, and, you know, because we're a public school, so we can't, we can't just say we don't want you here. You know, we have all kinds of kids, and a lot of them have very special needs, and as an institution, we need to learn together how we deal with students with varying social and emotional needs, and that's what this is about.
Okay, and I wasn't, I didn't mean return on investment in dollars, believe me. But that would be, you know, less kids placed outside the district for reasons that tie in with this training, or, you know, less, fewer repeat offenders, anything like that that would be our goal. I guess for me, it was, and I'm not challenging this, that it's a bad idea, because I don't think it is, I'm just challenging again, it was probably about the same time last year when we were talking about having Dr. Guskey come in and talk to us. And I think that conversation kind of boiled down to, well, we just want to get people talking, and we didn't want that kind of training and that level of spend to just end with people talking. So I guess my challenge is to have some kind of proposed outcome, at least, to what do we want to implement, where do we want to go with it, and have an actual plan.
Well, the woman that Kate and I spoke with at length suggested that we get this group trained so that this group can then articulate what we think the plan's going to be and how we can go about paying for it. Because, you know, it's going to take time, it's going to take money, it's going to take an investment on our part, professional development, availability for staff, and we have to do it in chunks and in pieces. So that's why it was recommended to us that we start with this group. And so I don't know if I can give you a definitive answer today that says, you know, next year, this is what this is going to look like throughout the year. I think we identified certain things that we want to do first. We want to work on this team, we want to revisit our SWBIS positive things, we're looking at the social thinking training that another group went to and how that might be of assistance in certain places and buildings in our district. For once, for one thing, our emotional support teacher at Lower, who was one of the ones that participated, was talking about how she already sees how it can help her, so we're doing a debrief there. So we're looking for different strategies to put in place and build a plan from that. And then you'll see those recommendations coming when we start to look at our comprehensive plan for next year, and that's when we would need to get the board's buy-in for a definitive plan.
Okay. So the proposal that's attached is just for that first chunk?
Yes.
Okay.
How much do the other chunks cost?
Well, it depends on what we do. So, I mean, we can send people individually up to Bethlehem to be trained, we can have them come back out and redo these types of trainings for groups of 45 people, and you know, you see what the cost is. It's about $3,200 or $3,250, I don't have it right in front of me, per day for a trainer to come out and work with 45 staff members. So, you know- So, you know, after we figure out where to start with this, and that would probably be just like we do on other professional development days, we have pen litter, see person come out and they're working with a set group of people. We might have them come back out and work with a set group of people and then continue to grow that.
Would there be an opportunity for the forty-five or so staff members to, to use the training, to disseminate the information to the broader staff? Or would it require every employee in the district to ultimately get this training to be effective?
I, I think that to some extent, the people that are in the first training can help disseminate the information. But I think in talking with the people at Bethlehem Institute, you know, if you want to do a full, you know, a full district transformation of culture, it's going to take time and they're going to have to come and insert themselves, just like we do with any other type of coaching that we've done in our district. So it's not just a quick, hey, here's how you do it, everybody go back to what they're doing. I think it's, it's a, it's conversation, it's revisiting this, it's taking the time to understand it, it's putting it in practice. But we want to hit some key people that, that are working with the families initially and then we'll grow it from there.
And I know I approved the agenda on Friday, but did, did we put this on the agenda?
It's on the agenda.
Okay.
It's on the public content of the agenda.
Okay. No, I mean, the, a motion to?
Oh, no, I didn't put a motion on because I, I, you know, I wanted you to talk about it first, but I think it would be helpful if we could get it approved so that I can sure up the, the training dates and they hold the dates for us and that we can get staff to commit to come, to coming for the four days.
So if we're going to do this, you really need us to approve it tonight?
I, I mean, I think it would be helpful. Otherwise, I'd have to push it back and, you know, then you're, you're talking about trying to do something in August and I'm not sure if I can get people. I mean, that's, that's what it comes down to. But if, if that's what you want, I can.
Okay, does anybody else have any other comments on this?
Yeah, can you guess what I'm going to ask?
I can, but go ahead.
So you sent this to us on Friday with a bare outline for five hundred dollars an hour, basically to find out stuff that you don't know how big it's going to get. If we're just starting to have forty-five people trained at five hundred dollars an hour, okay? And that's just going to be the very, very beginning of it. And eventually, we're going to have to get into the community outreach and all this stuff, which I thought the school was already doing, community outreach and building community and a sense of community and billing families. This is a huge effort. When you start talking about all of these things, about having the circles and having all of this, these discussions, that either happens during the school day or more likely doesn't. If it doesn't happen during the school day, then that person has to be paid, okay? But they have to be trained before they can be paid to work outside of school. You're talking about an enormous sum of money to implement this. I, I feel as though before I spend sixteen thousand or two thousand or fifty cents, I'd like to know a lot more about what you plan to do with this. I get the big picture, I get it. And all of these things have value. But I'm wondering how we actually do the implementation. What is the deliverable? What is, as you said, you know, the return on the investment? What is, what is the deliverable? We have fewer people outplaced, we have fewer people this. We have a, we have a sense of community where everybody loves Potts Grove and we have kumbaya meetings every third Thursday. What is it going to be that we're going to get from this thing?
Well, I could have sent people to Bethlehem for a lot more money, for a lot less people to preview this and to find out what we could possibly do, but this is...
I would argue that five hundred dollars an hour is a lot of money for most of the folks in this room.
Okay, well, Mr. Lindgren, you, you have to decide if you're interested in looking outside the box at?
I'm interested in looking outside the box. I don't have a box. I have a thin piece of paper with very little information and you're asking me to make a decision on it? On an entire program that spans years?
It's a research-based program paid for through grant funds.
Where's the research? What, can you give me research? There's not even a reference on here. I can't do anything with a piece of paper.
Well, I can, I can follow up with that and we can work, work on it next year.
I would like that very much.
I was responding to discussion from this board that they wanted, you know, to look at different ways that we can address the culture, safety, the security, the feeling of belonging, all of these things. And this was, you know, Kate and I researching this and bringing this forward. But if, obviously, if you're not quite ready for it, then I will go back and get you any information that you need.
No, no, I am quite ready for it. I'm ready for a lot more information about where we're going with this. I'm ready for a more developed thought of how we're going to do this thing than just, we're going to send some folks to training and then we're going to figure out stuff. That's not a thought that's worth sixteen thousand dollars to me.
Well, it's, it's not just we're going to figure out stuff. It's, it's bringing people around to the concept and then talking definitively about what it looks like in practice in Potts Grove, whether it's just training all of our counselors, whether it's training our SAP teams, whether it's training our child study. We, we need to learn about this more as a team and then discuss how it would work best in Potts Grove, which is why it's the most cost-effective to have them come to us as opposed to sending some of us out. I mean, I could send three people out and I, it would probably be about the same cost. See what I mean? But bringing them in, they were able to work with a, a much larger number of, of staff.
I, I have another question. Were any other practices looked into? Was this the only one? I mean, this is, personally, I like to comparison shop. So, you know, maybe rather than presenting us with one thing and saying, this is it, this is what, this is all we have and you have to vote on it now so we can get the, the wheels in motion. Say, you know, we looked into this, this and this. We liked this for this reason, dislike this for this reason. You know, give us other information, more information rather than...
We wouldn't be recommending another one, Ashley, but I can certainly bring you more information. I could bring the people out here. This is, this isn't something that a couple of places are doing. This is something that's pretty well-established. It's international, so other districts in the...
Have them bring somebody from another district and say, this is where we started from and this is where we are now.
Well, I have people that live in this district that have been exposed to it. Michael's been exposed to it at Springfield, Field. Dana's been exposed to it, Kate's been exposed to it. We have teachers in the district that are asking for this through their principal, which is why we went out and, and tried to get the information. So whatever it is that you need me to do from, to bring to you, I can certainly do that.
Let's see what you just said right there. You should have opened with that because we don't know that until just now. And, and we're going into this blind and that's, that's a lot of money regardless of whether it comes out of our, our budget or not. That's, if this doesn't work, that's sixteen thousand dollars we could have spent on something that is going to work. So regardless of where the money's coming from, we don't want to waste it on something that maybe won't work or maybe another district tried and it didn't work out for them and they had to sort of, you know, change it around and make it work this way or whatever. You know, it's, it's just something, a lot more information and maybe some, you know, some other people that, not just the salesperson. Maybe somebody, if this is such a, a huge thing that's being done all over the place, let us talk to some of those people and, you know, share their experiences with us on how it's helped them.
I've experienced the use of circles in the mental health setting, residential facilities, and did find them productive. But again, my concern, as always, would go back to the cost factor. And I think Mrs. Custer has a good idea not to hear necessarily from the salespeople because they're coming with one in ten and one in ten only, but really to hear if we could meet up with some other districts that have implemented it, implemented it and see their feelings, was the cost worth it? What kind of changes are they seeing? I think that's, that would be a wise idea.
Well, we've heard from a few members of the board. You know, I'm actually fairly comfortable with, with this concept. I read through the information. I did a little side research on my own and, and I think it's a worthwhile use of our federal training dollars for the administration. But if there isn't the support here right yet for this, then, then there isn't the support for it. Seems like several of us have been quiet on this. Is there anybody who would be interested in moving this forward tonight? Or are we all in general consensus that we need more information before we do so? Does anybody want to speak? Anybody want to bring it forward? So I think that's your answer for now, Mrs. Kielma.
Last item on the discussion agenda is the high school renovation update. And Mr. Hannah's here and Mr. Kiefer from KCBA to come on up and give us an update?
Hello, everyone.
No.
So I'll do my monthly update and then I'm going to go through and do a little bit of a project, budget summary for you, where we are right now. Right now, the contractors are working in the auxiliary gym locker rooms and what are going to be the engineering lab and CAD lab. Those will be turned over to you in early August. They're working in the auditorium. You'll see some photos on that. That's going to be turned over to you in early August. They're working in the D A O right now and that's going to be turned over to you middle of June if it ever stops raining and the roof could get done. What's, what's left to be done is the dish, the high school office and this area up here, which is the science rooms. That's scheduled to start at the end of school, at the end of the school year. And then also, there's still some exterior work that has to be done, which is some milling and paving on the outside. So looking at what's going on, the turf field is progressing. As you can see out there, the concrete curb around the support to, to hold the turf field is being installed. The fence posts are in. They're out there now putting the under drains in and, and getting ready for the stone subbase for the turf field. You can see, here's another photo of it. This is a photo of the change order that you approved last week or last month where the water line and the power lines went through. That's been completed. Jeez, I'm sorry, these photos are not good. But this is the auditorium. You, you could see that the, the seats have been removed, the floor has been abated, the contractor is, is getting ready to place the concrete for the handicap areas and the pad for the auditorium console, which is going to control the sound and, and visual systems. Looking into the engineering lab and CAD lab, this is the engineering lab. This is one of the change orders you approved last month. The studs and drywall are up to conceal that wall. This is the CAD lab. Jeez, I'm so sorry, that, that, these are not good because of the lighting. But the CAD lab is moving along very well. You can see all, there's a lot of duck work there that's been installed by now. Here's another look. You can see the underground is in where the power and condiment's going to go to the CAD tables. The auxiliary gym, the masonry work is done in there. These new walls were put up to conceal the, the walls behind it. This will have a, a new sheet rubber floor, a mondo floor. The auxiliary gym toilet rooms, which, which house the referees and some of the coaches' labs are done and the fixtures are set. Looking at the, at the D A O, this area's been opened up and was scheduled to be replaced. It gets new masonry from here, across here and up with new capping. Once this was opened up, it was discovered that the sheathing in this masonry was in, in poor condition as well. So we're looking at a no-cost change order to take this down to roofline and that roofline will carry across here instead of replacing all of that. Progress in the D A O is, is moving along well. This is the reception area. You can see the ceilings are in, the new drywall's up and getting ready for paint. In fact, painters are in there now painting. You can see the new MDF room is, is installed and, and sealed and the conditioning's being done in there. One of the things I wanted to go over with you is the, the summary of the project. And this up here, as I reported to you in January, or some of you, the project was bid with an OSEP, which is an owner-provided insurance policy. And when, when Mr. Nestor got the cost for the OSEP, it was over seven hundred thousand dollars. So we took a look at that and asked the contractors to give us a cost of what it was cost for them to provide the insurance. And it was three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So we decided not to do the OSEP and to have the contractors provide it. And there was a change order written for three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars amongst the four prime contractors. So that number is not reflected in these change orders, okay? Because it's not a true construction cost, it was part of the project cost, okay? So the total change orders to date are six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, of which you can see the G C is six seventy-eight. The E C and the P C are negative numbers because there was an allowance amount in their contract. And as we were getting towards the end of this project, we didn't want to leave that much money in their contract, so we decided to take it out as a change order. That's why that shows up as negative change orders. We took their allowance and decided that if anything comes up, we'll write change orders, not take it out of allowance. And the M C is a hundred and forty-two, forty-two thousand is what was written in change orders. So if you look at that, your contingency was one point three million and right now, half that contingency has been used. And all those change orders haven't been written. I, I have tried to make a projection of some of the costs we're going to see in the D A O. For example, I can see when we get out into the paving, we're going to have to fix some soft soil where there's holes in the paving. So I tried to project what some of those costs are. There are some costs, we have to fix the auditorium ceiling from some leaks, and there are other things. So I tried to make a projection of costs that we're going to incur and that is included in this projection. Now, that doesn't say that I, I got everything to the end of the project. I'm just trying to give you a picture and, and determining what I see, what I expect. The project is, is sixteen percent is left to pay and we're eighty-four percent done. So we still have four point three million dollars left to pay out to the contractors and we paid them twenty-two million. So we're, we're towards the end stretch. I know what happened. I took this off my, my drive, I had a link. And I put it on a flash drive. I apologize. So looking at the overall summary, I guess it gives you, you know, you used half the contingency, but we're almost done with the project. And, and one of the things that, that we, we need to discuss with you tonight is two change orders that we know we're going to have to execute quickly. And as we got into the D A O, we see that there's duck work that is not compliant with the energy codes, code compliant, doesn't meet lead requirements and has to be fixed. For example, the wrong duck work was installed. There were long runs of flex duck, which is not adequate. Some of the duck work's not insulated. Some of the duck work is damaged in, in concealed areas up, up in the mezzanine of the auditorium. The lights, the existing ceilings are scheduled to stay in many of the places. The lights are not tied up to the structure, which are a code requirement, they have to be. There were ADA issues, light switches were not at the right hel, height. The code official wouldn't permit them. He wanted us to change them, they had to be changed. Some of the items did not have controls. Some of the HVAC systems did not have controls in the contract and we need controls to, to, to control them under the new system. So those were not in there and that's, there's two change orders I'd like to propose to you tonight. One is for new HVAC controls for thirty-seven thousand dollars. And the other one is thirty-four thousand dollars to correct the duck work in the D A O. So that pretty much ends my presentation. Jim or I can answer any questions, if anybody has any?
So what's the bottom line as far as what is going to cost us compared to what was budgeted for it? Are you going to be over budget or what?
On the entire project? I don't see it going over budget.
How about specifically for what was set aside for change orders?
I'm sorry?
As far as what was set aside for change orders?
Dave, did you want to get in on that or?
Yeah, I'll talk to that. Back in November, when we started pulling together our final borrowing, we looked at where we stood. We got some recommendations from these two gentlemen on what we might expect to see going through the remainder of the project as far as change orders. And I incorporated that into my budget. I will tell you, I incorporated some additional buffer money into the budget as well when we borrowed, not a tremendous amount, but some. And I've given you in Board Docs a spreadsheet showing the status of change orders based on our final borrowing budget. So, we had incorporated in that borrowing, an estimate of $350,000 of change orders that would take place from that point through the end of the project. As you can see, I've also outlined what we've actually acted on up to today, not including any of the conversations that Mr. Hannah just presented to you. So, we've incurred $267,000. So, that shows that there's $82,000 left. However, I do want to point out that one significant change order that we anticipate coming, actually, the work was done last summer and we have not gotten a change order for it yet, and that is the lead remediation in the ceiling joists here in the cafeteria. So, we don't know what that number is, but I had put in a sizable placeholder for that in here. So, and also added some additional potential abatement work throughout the rest of the project. As you can see, we've only seen a $10,000 change order from that contractor thus far. So, we don't know how much that change order for last summer is yet. But the good news is, I don't think we've seen a lot of new abatement issues come to the forefront.
No, and the only abatement that is left at this time in the project is just marker boards in the science area. That's it.
So, we currently have a little bit of money left in that bucket for change orders. However, approving the 70-plus thousand dollars that Mr. Hannah's talking about tonight would consume most of this. So, anything beyond that, we're going beyond what I have factored in to the borrowing. So, if that number exceeds the additional undefined money that I put into the borrowing, then we would be looking at tapping into our capital reserve to pay for any of the additional costs.
If I can just, I'm sorry, if I can just add one more thing, I'm sorry.
That just seems to me to be a non-option. So, you know, this is in my field of expertise, but I seem to hear excuse after excuse after excuse, many of these things. I ask myself, well, why didn't we know this beforehand? If you could just move a ceiling tile and look? Other things I do understand, you're not going to know until you tear the whole thing down. It seems to me, we need to look at, okay, we might run out of money, so we need to make some changes. We need to do the last 16% a little different. We need to, we can't run out of money. The taxpayers only have so much. We need those capital funds for many, many other things. So, I think we need to hear from someone that, well, you could do this differently to save this amount of money and have a little more cushion. This is getting a little too close for my comfort.
I'd just like to clarify, Mr. Parker and the rest of the board, what I just heard here, and you please correct me if I'm wrong, is that we're under budget on the project. But you made your best estimate as to what we would need to borrow to fund the project last fall and it looks like you're going to come in short compared to what you estimated. So, while I hear what you're saying, what I hear is that we're going to finish this project and we're not going to go over budget despite all the change orders. Because we factored in that there would be the contingency fund, I remember all the discussions very well, and that we're going to be possibly as much as a million dollars under budget, did I, what do we think?
Well, looking at this, yeah, you're at half, Mr. Rabinewitz.
Okay, so 600 and something thousand dollars under budget when it's all said and done, hopefully, if nothing major comes between now and then. The unfortunate consequence of under borrowing is we would have to pay for anything additional out of capital reserve. But the positive consequence of paying for those things out of capital reserve is we're not paying interest on additional borrowed funds. So, over time, it's my opinion that our financial health is better for being a little low than being too high and having a bunch of interest being paid out on money that we actually didn't need. So, that's my take on it. We're not taking from a well that is dry, we just underborrowed a little bit compared to what we could have now that we have hindsight.
If I can just add one more thing?
Please.
Just to clear the picture up a little bit more is, as I had said, the amount that I figured were used and I did make some projections. So, those are not all the change orders written. I'm anticipating some additional costs and it's in there. Did I get all the costs? No. I hope I did, but I don't know if I did. What's being done in the D A O and what's being done in the science area is all new H V A C systems. Those systems are bought, those systems are sitting here, the duct work's probably being fabricated because they measured it up. I don't anticipate the H V A C systems, you know, issues we ran into the D A O. That D A O was set to save a lot of what was there. It was functioning, it didn't meet the minimum air requirements and of course, once the ceilings were taken out, the furniture was out, you know, you got to clear a picture of what was there and it had to be fixed. All the welding's done, there's no more welding that has to be done that gave us problems before reinforcing the joists. So, are we going to hit change orders in the high school office and the science lab? Possibly. I don't foresee any. I think we've got a good look at them, but there always could be something we didn't see. So, if that helps anything.
I have a question in regards to the lead grant that we were speaking about before. Are we still on pace to get that grant? And if not, if we do get that grant, that was, I understand, $2 million, couldn't that replace some of the funds that we would need to use from the capital gains?
That was already incorporated in our borrowing plan. We've already gotten that money and used it for the project. If we would fail by some stretch of the imagination, we would owe that $2 million back. That's not going to happen.
Do we not need that money in capital funds for many, many other projects we recently heard about?
How much do we think realistically, based on those projections that you've made, understanding that there may be other things, but based on what we now know, how much money are we talking about taking out of capital projects versus borrowing? Because if it's $50,000, then that's one thing, and if it's $3 million, that's another.
The big question is, what's coming from the abatement contractor? I don't know that number, okay? But I would expect we'd be talking about a couple hundred thousand dollars, not a million.
And how much money is currently in capital reserves?
Approximately 6 million.
And beyond that 6 million, there's other money that, there's a $1.5 million reserve in our healthcare fund that we still haven't made a final decision about where it's going to go.
Yes.
And we also have a P S R's reserve that is quite sizable.
Correct.
We also have a budgetary reserve of how much?
Uncommitted fund balance is about 3.5 million dollars.
So, when you add up all the reserves that we have in Potts Grove School District currently, what's that number?
You're asking me a big number. I'd say it's probably around 11 million dollars, but I'm guessing.
I'm not holding you to it. I'm not holding you to it. So, while, I guess my point is that we're not in bad financial condition in this school district as it relates to the financial side of our balance sheet. We certainly are in bad shape when it comes to the burden on our taxpayers, but none of these decisions are going to have a direct impact on the taxpayers. That impact has already been decided for us by the decisions that have been made in the past. So, we've got to finish the project, in my opinion. Can we not, if we don't approve these change orders that you're asking for, we're going to have big gaping holes in the district office? What would be the consequence? We won't get the lead down and then we'll owe $2 million back? Okay, I'm good. Anybody else?
And I'm not suggesting we don't approve these change orders. I agree, we have no choice, you know? But I don't want to be cutting into the capital funds budget either, so we need to be thinking about that moving forward.
Couple of questions. This is just, please explain to me a little bit more about the controls issue in the district administration office.
The district office had all new H V A C systems installed except for some hot water terminal units, being conductors in vestibules or hot water baseboard in Ms. Fialma's office and a couple other offices. Those were scheduled to remain. And the entire A T C system, temperature control system in the facility was changed from pneumatic, where air controls the valves and the dampers, to digital, where now electronically they're being controlled. So, previously, those terminal units that were to remain were controlled by the pneumatic system. The pneumatic system has gone away and now everything's digital. The contract did not point out for the contractors to put new digital controls on the terminal units that were scheduled to remain. They were not in the contract. So, they have to be put in to control those systems. They can no longer be controlled by pneumatic.
So, whose failure was that? That seems to be a pretty clear failure.
It would be the mechanical contractor.
Yeah, that's what I'm going. I'm wondering about an errors and emissions claim for that. And granted, that's not a big deal. It's of the 37,000, I think you said that one?
It's 37,000.
37 for that one. That is something that I think is worth investigating, even if there's some other decision that we make later, I think we have to at least look at that. That's a pretty obvious one. Now, we have been, I think, very supportive of other unforeseen things that could have been foreseen if there was a very, very, very thorough, but we didn't pay for a very thorough existing condition survey, okay? We didn't do that, that's fine, but missing the controls, I think, is a pretty clear miss. I don't think there's much discussion there.
In their defense, if I can, I can say that once we found out about it, we, doing engineering, any day of the day, went back to your contractor and said, hey, you need to help mitigate this cost. And from what I'm understanding, I haven't seen it yet, the 37,000, I'm anticipating it coming back around 30,000. So, what I'm asking you for tonight is, I named you 37. I haven't gotten a firm quote from our mechanical contractor yet, okay? But I'm understanding, based on a third-party email I got over the weekend, that the mechanical consultant has gotten somewhere with your vendor who services your whole system, your constant controls, and said, hey, you know, you're proprietary in here, we're renewing your contracts for service, all these, you need to mitigate it. Somewhere that may have worked, I don't know that, but that's why I'm asking for 37 because I just hear that's what may happen.
To be clear, up to 37 is the language in the motion that is sitting in front of me.
It's not a hard number, it's up to. Same thing with the duct work, it's up to. We're trying to mitigate those costs as well.
Mr. Davis, if we approve the change order, that does not preclude us from going after an errors and emissions claim against the architect. If we approve the change order, because the mechanical contractor, it's not his fault, it wasn't on the design, so he has to be paid and we have to do it, we can follow through on a claim?
Can certainly review any remedies going forward against third parties.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? I'm going to make, there's two motions here. I'll make the first one. Motion to approve a change order in the amount not to exceed 37,000 to Fry Lutz Corporation for the purchase and installation of additional H V A C controls. Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Are there any other comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Second motion, recommendation to approve a change order in the amount not to exceed $35,000 to Fry Lutz Corporation for modifications to the duct work in the administrative offices to comply with code requirements. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine nothing.
Unrelated to that, I was just wondering, does the contract that we have specify that we're getting as-built drawings at the end of the project? Will we be getting digital copies of the as-built drawings as well? They don't want to make sure that these as-built drawings are better than the ones we got to do this project, so.
Yes, I would agree with that.
And we just have another piece to the high school renovation update. Dave wants to talk with you about some furniture for the high school that he's been working with the building administration.
Yes, also, excuse me, also in your Board Docs packet was a spreadsheet on what I hope to be the final furniture request for the project. This is outfitting the student spaces that either have been renovated since last December or are about to be renovated through the summer. And the total cost, I want to put a caveat here on this. I just received a late quote revision from one of the vendors, so the prices may go down slightly. So, I'm going to ask you to, if you're in agreement with authorizing this purchase, to do it subject to a potential modification based on a late quote that we received. Total cost that we're requesting is just over $93,000. The vast majority of that money is focused on the classroom spaces, as I indicated. We have a $55,356 quote from Verco, who was our classroom furniture provider that we used last year. As those of you who were at the meetings last year, remember, we went out to a full bid last time and they were substantially lower than the competitors. They participate in a nationally bid program and we're actually getting prices below that national bid program. Plus, the equipment is all the same equipment that we put in the building last year. equipment is all the same equipment that we put in the building last year. We're also asking for some, there's going to be some teacher chairs involved in the purchase. There's going to be some equipment for our engineering labs, some more heavy-duty equipment, work tables, so that they can do their assembly of their products and whatnot on them, some electrical charging tables, et cetera. In addition, we're looking at purchasing some patio furniture for out here, outside here, some picnic tables, and benches for the students to sit when they're, when it's nice outside. And we've received a request for new stage risers to support our music groups and plays in the auditorium, as long, as well as the sound, sound shells. So that's what's all involved in the ninety-three thousand dollars. We don't necessarily have to take action on it tonight, however, I'm a little concerned that we may not have everything for the start of school if we wait until our next meeting. So, I mean, that, that's not a do or die, but we may have some, it may, we don't know what the delivery time's going to be. So if we can order it now, that would be beneficial to us. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have in relation to this. I indicated to you, there's also, I put together a budget for you of what we expected to spend in furniture for the project. When we originally started out, we put together a three-hundred thousand dollar budget. Prior to this request, we had spent a hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollars, which leaves us about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars left in that budget. And again, I'm requesting use of ninety-three thousand dollars of that budgetary line.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
I understand that, I guess the last three items are new items. I don't understand the need for new desks and chairs, except for the, we're having additional classrooms, but why can't we use the desks and chairs, teacher and student, that were in the old classrooms?
When we went through the classrooms, I, we have some teachers here, I'm sure they'd be happy to chime in, teacher desks were vintage, to say the least, and in very, very poor condition in many cases. But we're actually not looking at purchasing any, any additional teacher desks at this time. We are looking to purchase some additional teacher chairs, because they are, they're in some poor repair too, and, you know, our teachers need to have something nice to sit on. And we don't want it to look junky when, you know, you open a new building. But there's, that's a very small component. I don't want to overstate that. And we are using, reusing most of the furniture. We're looking for three classroom sets of desks and chairs to replace, to actually fill. We're going to, we're going to put them in a, in a, in one of the other rooms and move some of the sled desks into the new, newly created rooms, but there are several new rooms that were created as part of this renovation project in the, in the wing that we're dealing with now. We're adding some science rooms with lab tables and everything like that, but we need to have stools for the students to sit on at those lab tables. We also need desks and chairs in those rooms for when they're getting their classroom work done. So, so we are, in fact, we are taking for some, for the engineering lab, we are, had a meeting with Mr. Cardwell this week, and we're refurbishing some of the existing equipment, putting new tabletops on to try and save whatever money we can. So this is not a wholesale dump and replace. I would say about eighty-five percent of the existing equipment is staying, but we do need to add to the inventory.
My question would be in regards to the, the equipment for the new classes, like the CAD room and such, not that, I guess you can count that as part of furniture or not. I remember a couple of years ago, they came in front, from, we had the physics issue, where we had lots of equipment that were like, as you say, vintage, and the board at that time approved some new equipment for the thing. Are we also going to be using some of this funds to make sure that we have the equipment available, to make sure those CAD rooms are used to its fullest for our teachers and our students?
We haven't received any requests for additional equipment at this point in time. We do have some room left in the budget, if that's something we need to address, but that hasn't been brought forward.
All right, so, so I was actually pretty calm until I heard you say that, then I got a little less calm. So we don't know what we're going to need for these new classrooms? That's what I just heard you say. Did I not hear you correctly?
I haven't been told that there is any new equipment needs. Most of, most of what they're doing is robotics, things of that nature. They already have some of the equipment and they're working on it. We're not looking at buying classroom supplies, that would be part of the high school budget process. We do have, we do have some, some of the heavier duty pieces of equipment, bandsaws and things like that, that were retained from the shop areas. So those things are there, the heavy-duty equipment's there. Is there the possibility of some unique piece of equipment being needed? I'm sure there is, but we haven't had that conversation in any of our meetings.
Does anybody else have anything?
We're kind of seeing a bit of a, I would say, a trend of things. It's very hard for me to make a decision based on this. I don't see what we have that we're replacing, we're reusing. I don't have anything to evaluate. And I understand that we are, we ask the administration basically to take care of all the nuts and bolts and the details, absolutely. Well, we did that on the building, and we found all these change orders, because not your administration, but previous administrations to keep the shop drawings. This building was renovated very, well, I would say very recently, fifteen, twenty years ago. Those shop drawings should have been kept, the CAD existed, the as-built could have been done. We might not have had the surprises if those, if that information was kept. We don't have that information, so we're paying for change orders again, okay? And guess what? We went through that on Ringing Rocks, too. We did that renovation, and it's happened before as well. So I do want, I do want to be able to say that we're good here and all of this, but, you know, for example, terminology, words are words, stage extensions and sound shell. I heard stage extensions, so I was okay with that, and then I heard about risers. Risers are different than extensions, so maybe I'm just not understanding what you're buying for the money.
The, the stage extensions are four-by-eight inch planks, very similar to what a riser is. They just have a mechanism that attaches them to the front of the stage, so that it provides a, an extension in the, in the surface, across the width of the stage. And the, and the sound shells are just so that all the, all the sound projects forward.
Thanks, I know, I thank you very much. I guess what I'm saying, and this may not be the way the rest of the board works, and if so, I will defer to the other folks, but this, these things are, to me, meaningless words and numbers. Yes, I get that we're doing heavy-duty work tables for STEM labs for eighty-five hundred dollars. I get that. It makes a difference whether I'm getting fifteen or two, to me, for that eighty-five hundred. I would say there's, there's a difference in how I approach that. I don't, I don't want to get down to, you're going to buy it from this guy in this mountain. I don't, I want that to have a pencil sharpener on the corner of this. That's not what I want. I want to know basics, numbers, eaches. What are we getting for this? What are we reusing? It baffles me. It baffles me that we can be putting in brand-new classrooms and not know if we have all the stuff that we need, because, quote, "We don't have a request for that yet." I don't want to get to the day that we're opening the rooms, and we're going to have, you know, the cutting ceremony, we open the rooms, and, well, this is where we're going to have stuff, but we don't have it now because nobody asked. That's not, that's not an answer that...
In all, in all due respect, Mr. Lindgren, we have met with the teacher who's going to be teaching those classes.
That's not what you said. You said, we have received the request.
No, I was asked about the, the specific equipment, okay? We, we met with him, asked him what his needs were, and this is, these are what's presented for those rooms. If, if there's something he didn't share with us at that meeting, I'm not aware of it, okay? Is there...
There's a nuanced difference, okay? The way you said it before was as though it was on the, on the back of the instructor. I'm saying it's on the back of the administration, because, because we're, we're delegating these things to you, we want you to do this. We want you to have asked. The fact that somebody hasn't, you know, come to you and said, that, what you said just now is different from what you implied before.
I'm talking, when we're talking about furniture, I'm saying, did they come out and say, I need a new drill, or I need...
It's a project. The project includes the furniture and the equipment. It's a, it's an entire project. The school doesn't work without all the stuff, including staff. So is this project ready to go? Is, are the buildings going to be in good shape, sir?
To my knowledge, yes. We had a meeting with the principal and the teacher of this class, and what is presented in here is everything that was requested, okay? I can't address things that I don't know what they're going to need. They have to tell me that. So what's, what's in here, what's incorporated in here is what was requested, okay?
Then it seems to me it's, it's done. If he comes later, he or she comes back later, then they have to wait till the following year. I mean, my only concern would be, has that message been portrayed to them? As long as the teacher understands that what you have requested is it, anything additional needs to be budgeted, you know, for future time.
I only have one other question I wanted to ask, and I, you know, I'm seeing the number on the furniture approval action is a little bit lower than what the document that we were provided, so that's good. And, you know, I don't buy office furniture, so I would tend to agree with Bob, a little bit more of a breakdown on what we're buying would be, would, would have been helpful to me to understand, especially the big fifty-five thousand dollar, which was sixty thousand in, in the document that you folks have, it's fifty-five, three-five-six. And possibly will be lower, too, because Mr. Nestor notes that he got a, another quote that could result in a lower net price from Verco, which is the biggest vendor. To be clear, I heard you say that about eighty-five percent of the things that we have in the, are being reused, which means only fifteen percent new stuff is being purchased. And, and so fifteen percent of the new things that we're purchasing from Verco, or fifteen percent of the total furniture that we need amounts to fifty-five thousand dollars, which still seems like a lot of money to me. So just because it seems like a lot of money to me doesn't mean it is, you know, it would have been helpful, therefore, to have the breakdown of what we're buying, as we did with the other purchase. And then that isn't really much of a question. We approved last meeting another furniture purchase, which includes some high school furniture for conference rooms, if I remember correctly. The administration asked for forty-six thousand dollars, and we approved forty-two thousand dollars. Is any of that furniture that, that was in that previous request, in this request?
No, that was in the, that was incorporated in the prior, the hundred-and-eighty-four, five, that's listed as total expended to date. And, and just to clarify, just so you understand, the number, the numbers are not different between the two, other than on the budget document, the sixty thousand dollar number includes not just the Verco, but also the Office Service Company, which is the, the teacher chairs.
So what you're asking for is authorization to spend the amount that, that is, that is in that document, with the caveat that you might actually get a lower price than what you presented to us so far?
Like I said, we, we just got a revised bid in at five o'clock, and I hadn't, didn't have time to incorporate that.
And the consequence of waiting until June fourteenth is the possibility that classrooms may not be ready on the, on the first day of school?
They, they, there may be some components that are not fully outfitted. What, if we can, if we do it now, I can be fairly certain that we can arrange a delivery around August fifteenth and have everything up and ready. Not saying it can't be done if we wait till the next meeting, but it'll put a little bit more pressure on the situation.
So what does the board want to do? Do we want to get more detail on this, or, and plan to approve it on the fourteenth, or, I mean, we, we have to approve this, we can't have empty classrooms. So we can't go through a thirty-million-dollar project, say it's finished, and then not have chairs for the kids, and desks, and lab equip, and lab tables, et cetera. So what, what is the board's pleasure here? Is, does somebody want to, to make a motion to do it now, or do we want to wait till June fourteenth and get more information? Thoughts?
Well, actually, for me, I think we, I would like to move forward with it, so we won't have a disruption for the students, but in the future, when we do have the breakdown, I would like to see, like, how many chairs, how many, just itemize the pieces. That would be easier.
What I don't understand is, we just had this conversation a couple, a meeting or two ago regarding the admin furniture, and it was pretty clear what our expectations were at that time, what we wanted to see. So why didn't we not receive the same information this time? Mr. Nestor or Ms. Fiola?
I can provide you with the detailed list. I just, you know, it's like forty components, and I thought it might be a little bit overkill for you. But I, I'll be happy to, tomorrow, I'll, I'll shoot you an email with all the information.
Mr. Nestor, we've worked together before, haven't we? Was there any data that I turned down ever?
There was not.
Does somebody want to make a motion, or are we waiting till June fourteenth?
I'll make a motion to go ahead with that.
All right, I'll read the motion then, as a recommendation, and then you can make the motion, okay? Recommendation to award bids for furniture purchases for the Pots Grove High School to the following subject, to adjustment based on a late quote received. These are the lowest responsible bidders. Verco, fifty-five thousand dollars, three-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. Office Surface Service Company, forty-nine hundred dollars. Cape Park Recreation, forty-six, nineteen, and twenty cents. Paxton Patterson, eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-four dollars. And Stage Right, nineteen thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, for a total of ninety-three thousand, sixty-five dollars and fifteen cents.
I make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Do I hear two noes? Motion carries seven two.
You know, thank you, and I will send out that information, the details, to you tomorrow.
Moving on to action items, I recommend that you approve the professional staff retirement as submitted.
I'd like to make a motion to include all personnel items.
Second. Have a motion and a second for all personnel items. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing.
Moving to business, I recommend that you approve the change order for the Pots Grove High School construction project as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to include all items A through E.
How is this different than the one we just approved for them? How is this different than the one we just approved for them?
This-
This was last summer's-
This, yeah, this, this con, this, uh, change order was, uh, for services done last summer. Um, we, we had agreed to provide overtime to contractors. This contractor was very, uh, productive and has been a, a good worker with us throughout the contract. Um, they just didn't complete their document until, uh, recently. So, we're requesting authorization to remit payment for that.
I'll second Al's motion. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions on any of the items A through E?
I have a question on B. The E S Y, it's the same rate, but, uh, E S Y is typically a shorter day and sometimes less days. Why is it the same rate, or is this, does New Story do it differently?
Could you repeat your question? I'm sorry, I don't-
On letter B, for the extended school year, um, for the student at New Story, they're charging the same rate, but is it, are we getting the same amount for the same dollar? Usually E S Y is a shorter day and sometimes less days. Why is it the same rate? Or am I reading it wrong?
It's by, it's by the day, and, and the total amount is for the session of extended school year.
The contract doesn't define the, the time spent per day. It's just days of education.
Anything else, Mr. Parker, or anybody else? I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine, nothing.
Recommend that you approve the, uh, Ekra Group contract as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Now, um, I wanted to be clear myself on what we're approving. Um, we've had, we had a fair amount of discussion at the last board meeting. Um, and, um, I think that you added in, uh, uh, in addition to those, uh, the information that was presented, you added in some consulting services related to our need to complete, uh, the district planning process, which is up for, uh, renewal. So could you speak to that a little bit?
Well, it's, it's not the whole comprehensive planning process, but what I did was, because the initial presentation had a, an amount for the software, and then it had an amount for the, um, implementation, initial implementation by day. Well, I went back to them, and I talked with them after our conversation here, and said that we have to come up with the superintendent goals through this initial process, because that was one of the things that the board wanted. How much of that consulting time would we need to do that? So that's when they put together this summary and said that they would need three to five additional days, that they would cap that cost at $7,500. So, i- in the original proposal that you received, it's $2,500 a day for onsite professional development, 250 per hour for additional consulting. They're saying three to five days, but they're only going to charge us no more than 75. Doesn't matter how many days it, it takes. They're committing to that. So that was in the summary, um, document that I put on the board docs for board goals implementation planning. That's to get our goals worked on and established for next year. Now, if you want them to do the whole comprehensive plan, soup to nuts, starting over, that, that's something different. That would be something that we'd be doing in the fall. We, we can decide that later.
And we, so, right, okay, so that's what I wanted to make sure I was understanding. And thank you for clarifying that. And, and yet we do need to-
We do.
-have a new district, um, comprehensive plan. That's not something that's optional, right? This is something the state requires us to do on a regular basis. I was present the last time.
Right.
Um, we did it, um, and-
We paid the bucks IU last time to work with us.
So last time, we paid the bucks IU, and, and the question is, um, is will we, um, want to use this same firm to do it because they can? Or would we want to go back to one of the IUs, and we don't have to make that decision now? So, um, right now, we're talking about buying these, uh, apps for data, uh, um, analysis, uh, and then we're talking about additional consulting to tie some of that information into new superintendent goals that, uh, are, um, would be timely, and hopefully, uh, in accordance with, uh, with objectives stated by many of the board members here. So we're talking about a total cost of, what's the number, Shelley?
Um, I forget, I'm sorry.
It's nineteen-something plus another $7,500.
Yeah, it's just under 20.
The 7,500 is a one-time cost. The 19, um, uh, would be, would be an annual cost to the budget, not just this year, although it'll be in this year's budget. So I want to make sure everybody's clear on that. So I've said everything I want to do about it, other than I am fully in support of this. Um, I don't like spending money for nothing. Um, I don't believe that, that this is the case here. Um, I think that, uh, we need better analytics. We need better decision support in this district. We need to be able to make decisions based on factual and objective information, and this is a step in that direction. Um, and certainly, uh, Mr. Parker, you stated your objections, uh, in the last meeting. Um, I expect you will do so again. Um, but, uh, I'm very hopeful that this board will support this. Uh, but, but one more question before I give up the mic to anybody else. Mr. Nestor, are we making progress towards our goal of 0% on the budget? Because this is a, this is a plus on the budget when we're trying to get to minuses.
Yeah, yes, it is. Um, we, uh, since our last meeting, we did have an additional retirement that came to our not, our attention, uh, which won't take place until October. Um, so we factored that into the budget. So at this point in time, we're around $107,000 that we're looking to cover, and we're still digging. So, um, I think we'll be okay.
And while I'm on that subject, um, uh, you're looking to, for us to approve the budget, um, on June 14th, or we're going to have to call a special meeting. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. I'd like to have it, uh, approved on June 14th. I don't see, as long as everybody's okay with a zero increase, I think we can do that. Um, so, that would be nice-
Is there a meeting scheduled for, uh, beyond the 14th?
There is not, at this point.
Okay. And, um, I am remiss. Uh, I have been planning on going through, uh, with, uh, with a new fold attention, the, uh, the budget, preliminary budget that we approved, or whatever we call it, the final preliminary budget. Um, and, uh, and see, uh, and I'm going to make a commitment to getting that done, uh, again, for a second time, with an eye towards getting some additional detail on a few items. Um, but I can tell you right now that one of those items would be, uh, uh, itemization of equipment, like you did for us last year. Um, if we already have that, forgive me, because I didn't see it. Um, and, uh, I would like to see that again. Um, and, uh, beyond that, um, I've had the mic. Anybody have any questions about this Ekra Group proposal?
As you said, Mr. Rinnis, I will be voting no. I believe, um, many, if not most administrators are able to, uh, make their goals and even create the strategic plan with the numerous data, uh, that they already have. Uh, so I do not believe this is worth the cost or something our taxpayers should take on.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I think the idea is excellent, but I'm going to go back to sort of what I said about, um, the other item we were talking about before. I'd like to see some proof. I'd like to, rather than some former superintendent coming and giving us a sales pitch, um, I would like to, to hear from the district that's using it. I want to see data from that district. I want to see how it helped them, you know, move from X to X, and they're doing better. Because, that guy was a great salesman. I mean, he had me, but regardless of how good the salesman is, I don't buy a car without test driving it. And in this case, I feel like we're buying the car, and we haven't test driven it.
I'll just, uh, say from my point of view, um, what we're looking to get out of this, uh, although I wish we did it on our own, but what I do know is, is that I've been asking for it ever since, uh, my first board meeting, um, that I sat up here. And I do know that the administration has struggled with how to do it. Um, and I, I believe that, uh, in the end, Shelley went out and did what, what we asked her to do, which was to find a way. And if we need to bring help into the district to help us find that way, then, um, ultimately, uh, to get where we want to be, I support this, uh, just because I, I really believe firmly that we need to have goals that are measurable, um, and very clear. So if, if we do need to take this step to get there, then I'm in support of it. I would hope, I, I don't know what this, this, the web-hosted piece of this is going to look like, and that, that's kind of a fluff for me, uh, because we could do what I think we need to do without having it on a dashboard. But hopefully, we can develop some, uh, skills and change the culture to, this is the, this is the way we conduct our business, and, and maybe it, it doesn't turn into a, a re, uh, repetitive $20,000 a year cost for us, because I'll, I guess this is probably the only year it'll ever be $19,800. It probably goes up, uh, a little bit over time. So, uh, maybe this is the, the kick that we need to get us going in the right direction, and, uh, after a certain period of time, we can take it upon ourselves to, to see it through.
Thanks, Matt. I, I just want to also just clarify, um, uh, my thought process on this just a little bit more. This data that will, that these analytics, um, uh, at least as I envision them, are going to help us as we face decisions in the future that are, are often in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, such as whether or not to purchase, uh, a new, uh, math program, for example, or, or is our investment in balanced literacy actually showing results? Um, uh, and, and while it may seem like that's something that you could easily just snap your fingers and understand, um, based on the information we have, there are a lot of factors that go into figuring that out. And more than, uh, that, there's a lot of factors that, that might, um, be misinterpreted as relevant when they're not. Um, so the assistance, in my mind, that we get from good analytics, um, is a investment rather than a cost. Um, I really firmly believe that, uh, that's the case. And I honestly do not think that anybody in the district has the time or the training to, to do that kind of work. Uh, it's the work that's done by statisticians, and we don't employ statisticians here in the Pots Grove School District. And if we asked to employ them, um, they would cost a whole lot more than $19,000, as was discussed before. So, anyway, anybody else have anything?
Two things. One, uh, with what we pay administrative staff, um, I, I think if they need to do something to complete their job, then they need to do that on, on their own. Second, uh, as the salesman even stated, there's factors that even they will never be able to rule out or to know. Is a program working or not working? How much time was, you know, uh, did the parents devote to, to studying with the child? Uh, was the training done adequately? These are subjective measures that really bear the answers, uh, to what we need, which are best known and, and assessed by the classroom teacher and, uh, the administrators going into the classrooms, not by statistics. That doesn't give us the answers we need in an education setting.
Well, I agree with you and I disagree with you. Um, uh, I agree with you that, uh, that there is always going to be some level of subjectivity. Um, but I disagree with you that more objective data, um, uh, is going to, to be a bad thing. Um, we, the, most of us who are sitting here ran on a platform of being data-driven, um, and, uh, you can't be data-driven if you don't have data. So, uh, we do get all kinds of data, but, but, but it's not analyzed. Um, uh, it, it's not analytics. It's just numbers, and it doesn't paint as complete a picture as I personally believe we need to make good decisions. We clearly disagree on that. Um, we had a, a question from the audience. Mr. Fazlomek?
What type of public access is going to be given to the analytics, the dashboard, or the ability to drill down?
Great question. I don't know the answer.
Well, there's, there's FER protections, and obviously with the data that we are able to show the public, we do that on a yearly basis, and I'm certain that we can take some of the reports that are, um, developed here and add that to our presentation that we make on a yearly basis, and you're welcome to attend.
If we're talking about FER protections, aren't we talking about specifics on individuals? Now, aren't we looking at these numbers, the analytics in the aggregate, not as individuals? So does FER protections apply?
We're, we're looking at it in both ways, and as I said, all the data that we presented publicly before will certainly incorporate this data into the presentation, and you can attend and, and get that data. I'm, I'm not sure how we're going to share it yet with the public. If, in years past, we've put our presentations on the website, and you're able to view them. So I would, I would imagine that we'll be doing the same, uh, with this data.
Um, I haven't seen it yet, so I don't really have a firm opinion, um, uh, you know, in, uh, as we start to get it, I personally agree that, to the extent possible, um, whether it's good news or bad news, um, I think we should make every effort to share with the community. My personal opinion. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries seven-two.
Um, moving on to education items. I recommend that you approve the conference attendance as submitted.
Sorry, I was reading. Motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions?
I'll be voting no. Um, it seems to me we can send one staff person, and they can bring back the information. Uh, also, if, uh, we have those with CPA licenses and they need this training to keep up their license, that, um, their, their salaries should certainly be covering plenty for them to get whatever education they need.
I have a question concerning, um, okay, the cost is, uh, $2,485 for two, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but last year wasn't the same, um, conference attended for about $600? Why, why, I mean, that's an enormous jump.
I, I can't speak to the specifics, but of the, uh, difference from that, last year to this year in actual dollars, but I can tell you that, uh, at times, I speak at the conference, and when I speak at the conference, my, my attendance is comped.
Did you speak last year?
Yes.
Because last year it was $632. Even though, even with you being comped, that still doesn't... I, I'm not an accountant. Numbers aren't my thing, but that doesn't really add up.
I, I agree, and let, let me do some research on the $600.
May, maybe he went only one day. I mean, there's, it's a two-day, so it all, it all depends. Do they stay over? Do they go two days, one day?
Let, let me do some research, and I'll, I'll forward some information out to everybody. I'm just not familiar with the, what that $600 item is that you're referring to.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries eight-one.
I recommend that you approve the MCIU Board of Directors as presented.
Vote, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. I wanted to remind everybody that they've got a ballot in their packets and Ms. Cherico needs them. Here's mine. And are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine-nothing.
Committee reports.
Who's giving the curriculum committee report, Mr. Leach or Mr. Lepick?
I'll give you the report. We had discussed three main topics. I didn't get a chance to write the notes, as we just did this last week. The three topics were generally going to be in discussion of the elementary gifted program, where we had discussed involving bringing in new, very inexpensive programs that is going to be enriching of the students. The second most, the second topic was the grading practices implementation guide. This is going to come to the board next board meeting, if I'm not mistaken, where we're going to be recommending a change from our 90-10 to a more general range of a 70-30, 80-20, and a 90-10 version for the high school and a similar for the middle school, and we'll all go over that, of course, in the next meeting. So there was much discussion on this particular topic. This is actually an agreement with the teachers, the administrators, and even the board committee members in discussing all of exactly which is the best weight scale for our students. The last piece we discussed was the high school course enrollments. We had a long discussion as into the AP, as we've seen a tremendous growth in AP requests over the last three years, almost a 100% request, which is a good thing and a bad thing. With a good thing, obviously, we want to have our students requesting more APs and taking the more advanced classes, but of course you want to make sure that those students have the proper backgrounds, have the proper prerequisites, and making sure that they're ready and guided to do the correct AP courses. So we all came into an agreement, we don't want to slow the courses down or not cover all the material necessary, as we know these AP courses come with a rather lengthy test at the end, and of course, college credit. So everybody was in agreement with how the process was going. After that, we also discussed some of the actual classes enrollments and everything. I'm happy to say that after speaking with Ms. Fiola, she did see that all courses look in line. We don't see any issue with any of the courses that are going to be requested of the students. Obviously, some students, depending on the scheduling, of course, but we don't see any issues in that field as well.
Hal, regarding the grading practices, it was a very spirited discussion, I would say, and I personally think that we're going to have a, the result of this process is going to be some, a vast improvement over some of the issues that came up, whether they, as unintended consequences, this year. I did want to ask the administration when that, I realize that we're going to be asked to approve this on the 14th. When do you think, Dr. Shirk, the final document will be ready? I'd like to have more than a weekend for the rest of the board to review it, if possible.
My goal would be to have it to you the end of, the end of next week or early, early in June, with that, so you have at least 10 days to review it, because I need to follow up again with the teachers for one, as far as the implementation procedures are concerned, as far as how the actual guidelines will be implemented at the building level. I mean, that's really where the rubber meets the road, and the initial feedback I got from the staff was positive, so I should have that to you, you know, within the next week to 10 days.
So there will, will there be a corresponding guidelines document created for the two buildings, or is this, as there was, as was done last year? Or what is the plan along those lines? Because I don't recall asking that at the curriculum meeting.
No, you did not. My thought is, and I don't know, you all had the opportunity, at least the committee did, to see it in one document, where we talked about the implementation procedures as well as the percentage breakdown in grading. So if we can keep it, I thought it was a pretty decent working document, that you saw the whole package as far as the grading, the grading percentages, as well as the implementation procedures for the middle school and the high school. So I was leaning toward just keeping it in that format unless you had another recommendation.
I don't, I'm just asking what you plan to do and want to make sure that when we get to the first day of school, everybody knows what they're doing and feels comfortable with that. So if you're feeling like that's, that will be the result of this, then that's fine with me. I'll just say that I'm very happy with the work that you've done, and I'm hopeful that it'll be positively received by the community.
I have one other piece I forgot, actually should mention, and that regards with the discussion we had spoken about how some items are not added into the grading book or into Power School in a timely fashion, and we actually did discuss this. A lot of parents are saying that they're receiving, it's two, three, four weeks, sometimes even more than a month for something to be put into the Power School, vice versa. Sometimes they have nothing in the Power School, and at the last minute, bam, there's five or six different items put in Power School, and then the student's grade dramatically changes, something that the parent wasn't foreseeing. We did discuss this, and this also will be added into the new grading practice document.
Mr. Leach, that was one of the things that, as I mentioned, I want to have the opportunity to go back and talk to the staff about and learning. And I think, I think one of the things that we can continue to do is, as we put these practices in place, is it's a living document, so we can, the word pilot can be used. I mean, there's, I think it's something that we have to continue to work on and get feedback as far as the actual practice is concerned, but I want to have a chance to meet with the staff, talk to the staff about those little things, so that those expectations are set early, and then that can be conveyed to the parents. And then if, as changes are needed, we can, we can work, work through next year.
Anything else on curriculum?
I had had to leave before the AP discussion came up. What was the outcome of that? Are we looking into some kind of guidelines, you know, placement tests, teacher recommendations, something to make sure that the kids that are in AP or being, you know, or taking AP should be there? I mean, I have big concerns, considering we now have 58 10th graders registered for AP for this coming year. That's a huge jump. And when you're looking at, you know, kids in, taking AP Chem and AP Bio and, you know, that don't have the foundations and the prereqs, that scares me, because there's an awful lot of kids in there that are in there to get the college credit, and the class gets slowed down because kids are coming in there without the proper foundations and knowledge, that hurts everybody.
Mrs. Custer, Dr. Ziegler spoke at length about this when you weren't at the committee meeting, and I think the consensus of the group after hearing the data that was presented was that actually our underclassmen that are in the AP courses are scoring very well in the course, and the data doesn't support that it's slowing anything down. There's a set curriculum for AP, so it's not, it is what it is, and the teacher needs to teach the AP course, which is what we'll reiterate with the teachers, and if a student is coming without the requisite skills, then we need to deal with that student on a case-by-case basis, which is what they have done, and removed some students that weren't able to keep pace with the course the way it was written. You know, he, he spent, we spent a lot of time discussing this. I don't want to speak for Mr. Leach, but I think at the end of the day, we decided that we're going to continue to monitor what we have, and we felt comfortable with the programming, the way it's currently being implemented.
I'll say that, yeah, like exactly as Ms. Fiola said, we did go through this in great detail. We hit the administration and the teachers who are there with every question we could think of, because we have the exact same concerns. We've discussed how we went from 258 requests to 500 requests in just simply two years. So we do want to make sure, and even the teachers agreed, that we want to make sure that the students have the proper background, and that's the important thing. We got to make sure that the students have the proper background, and the guidance is going to have to be involved in making sure that the students are prepared to take those tests. We also got to make sure that we follow the College Board guidelines as into what is actually available, because we can't just turn around to a student when the requirement says they have to have a certain background that they have, and then say, well, we're not giving it to you because you're in ninth grade. As long as we can follow the background and the guidelines of the College Boards and to go along with the guidance recommendations, I think we can keep and make sure the proper students are taking the proper AP courses.
One of the things that was also brought up was that, as Dr. Shirkus had mentioned, as well as Dr. Ziegler, that no class should slow down, because some of the students had a lacking of knowledge in a particular area, that was a requirement, and they would have to, it would be upon themselves to fill in those gaps.
Well, I agree with most of what was said just now. However, seems to me that often when there's smoke, there's fire. So while we agree that no class should slow down, I think that there's been enough feedback from the student body to suggest that at least some of the classes did slow down. So, you know, I think that that is something that really can't be allowed to happen, it's not fair, to the students that are keeping pace, for one, and for two, there are a number of ways to avoid needing to do that, and we discussed some in the curriculum committee, and, you know, my guess is we're talking about a small percentage of the overall AP offerings where that might be the case, but I think we need to make sure that in the coming years and next year particularly, that that just doesn't happen. So, you know, sometimes you just have to have no tolerance for something. If a student isn't keeping up and can't keep up, then they should be dealt with individually and possibly might have to leave the course. If there's a group of students that don't have a base of knowledge, and it's going to slow down the students, the other students who do, then maybe those students need to have more reading assignments, because one of the requirements for at least one of the courses we talked about was the ability to read and understand information. So you don't have to have it taught in the class. So I don't know what else to say about it. I understand your concerns, Mrs. Custer, I share them, but I also understand that the offering of AP in a more generalized way is more positive for Pots Grove than negative. At least I believe that. I think that it's only going to make us a better school district in the end. Personal opinion, but I do share your concerns. I don't know what else to say. Does anybody else have anything?
And the only other thing I'd like to point out was when we were going over the grades, like as in what an 11th grader students were taking versus a 10th grader versus a 12th grader, since we've opened it up more in these past few years, the proof is going to be in the pudding, as I said, to Dr. Ziegler. We're going to see those test results, and when they come back, that's really going to be the determining factor of, did we offer the right students, the right grade, you know, the right AP courses? So that's what we're going to have to wait and see, and that doesn't come back until July, so we won't actually have that until next fall.
And I completely agree with you there, and I agree with you too, Rick, I mean, AP can do nothing but, but, you know, send us up, not take us down. I just don't want to see it become a free-for-all, and, you know, anyone who wants to take it, take it. I mean, my daughter was offered AP Psych three times, three times, and there was no way she was ready for it, absolutely no way. And I wouldn't let her take it. She was mad at me because I wouldn't let her take it, and this was last, this was this current year. She was offered it last year, and she finally was talked out of it by the guidance counselor, thankfully, because she was not ready. But when you have people telling you that you are ready, and sure, take it, take it, take it, why not? So that was my own personal experience with it, and then hearing other parents say, yeah, well, you know, my child didn't want to take this, but was being encouraged over and over again to take AP this and AP that. If the kids aren't ready, don't force it down their throats. And if they're going to get in there and they're going to struggle, not only is that going to hurt the other students in the class, but imagine the, how it's going to make that particular student feel if they struggle and, you know, just a few years ago, the, you know, the current senior class was told not to pick too many really tough classes coming into ninth grade, you know, pick wisely, because you don't want to overwhelm yourself when you're making that transition. And now it's like, oh, hey, you know what, take, take this, take that, you know, take, which is great to challenge the kids, but at the same time, it is a big transition. And we may have some kids that are going to be the exception to the rule, and they're going to do fantastic, and I hope they do, but at the same time, we're going to have those kids that are going to get in there and go, wow, this is so much harder than I thought it was going to be. Now what do I do? They drop the class? Then what do they do? If they drop the class two, three months in, they can't take something else, because they can't just pick up two to three months into another class. So then they're stuck with a study hall. Do they get the, do they have the right amount of credits after that? You know, it can become a snowball effect. So I just really, really want to make sure that this is watched closely, because there's way more at stake than just some numbers on a piece of paper here.
Thank you, Mrs. Custer. Anybody else? Moving on.
I have one thing concerning with Penny Schaefer and the elementary school. There were a number of programs, one of the things that she did talk about was also making those programs, starting with the gifted program, but then opening them up to other students with the idea, possibly going the route of reading Olympics, where more and more of the school was involved with it, so just wanted to mention that.
And I was very enthused by Mr. Schaefer's presentation. I think there's some nice reboots and additions to the elementary gifted program. And again, I think that as Pots Grove invests in things like its gifted program and its AP program, and, well, I'm blanking on other things right now, because I'm tired, but as we make these kinds of investments, it distinguishes us and lends us, gets us closer to the goal of making this a school district of choice. So moving on to the Operations Facilities Committee, I think we need a motion for, to approve the minutes.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine-nothing. And then, Mr. Alexander, can you report out for a policy committee meeting today?
Sure. We reviewed quite a number of policies tonight, and they will all be on the website, available for public review and comment shortly. Four policies on tobacco use, and basically the reason we have four policies is because they cover different groups of people, that would be on school property, pupils, administrative, professional, and classified employees. They each have their own policy regarding tobacco use, and the revision to the policies were all the same, basically updating them to include electronic cigarettes, electronic pipes, or any other device that simulates smoking. So previously, it had only covered tobacco products, where now it covers anything, you know, liquid nicotine or anything that simulates smoking. So all four of those policies will be updated to include those, to include that clause, and basically, I mean, that's just updating it for this day and age. It's becoming a popular thing. It's becoming a popular thing, the electronic cigarettes, and we need to have it covered. Three of the, three additional policies were, these are new policies being introduced so that we can be in compliance with federal regulations that basically regulates our federal funding. So we need to, we need to have policies in place to cover. One was a pretty broad policy, fiscal compliance. And then we had two more specific policies, travel reimbursement. And that was basically covered what we could reimburse for, from federal grant money. And also conflict of interest, which is exactly what it sounds like. We need to be in compliance with the federal guidelines, I guess, on conflict of interest in order to be eligible for federal grant money. So those are three brand-new policies. And again, they'll be out there for review, but they're very, they're boilerplate, they're, there's nothing out of the ordinary about them. And the policy committee pretty much had some general approval there. We didn't, we didn't see anything that needed to be changed. The last policy we reviewed is a new policy on the use and administration of nalaxone, which is Narcan. There are some funds available through the state if we meet certain requirements so that we can keep a supply of the drug in our schools in case there is an instance of an opiate overdose. To be eligible for the grant, we need to complete the application process, obviously. And then we need to train our nurses. We need to have a policy in place, which is the step that this is covering. And then we need standing orders from school physician on the administration of the drug. So this is, you know, again, getting current with the times. This is something that's out there now. It's saving lives and hopefully we never have the unfortunate event where we need it. But if we do, we need to have staff that's trained to administer it. And by fulfilling these requirements, we can get some state funding to have the drug on site at our schools at no cost, at least for the, for the actual drug, which I'm sure is probably expensive. So those are the policies we covered tonight. And then we had some opening conversation on developing policy around transgender issues and accommodations for students who may identify as being transgender. So there's no policy even drafted right now. What we did was we started the conversation tonight. We looked at, there's quite a good number of surrounding school districts who have already implemented policies. We reviewed one of those. It was Springfield Township School District's policy. But then we also reviewed a number of other documents, which include the U.S. Department of Education and the Department of Justice released a joint document that provides guidance on civil rights for transgender students. We also have a document of case, case law and case studies that was provided by, it came through the CCIU, was it?
No, through our, the attorney that we're on pool council with, Andy Faust, who's a member of Sweet Stevens and Katz. And he put an opinion paper together with recommendations for what he thought should be in a policy, reviewed the case law.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. And then also just some other documentation that's out there regarding rights and non-discriminatory practices. So again, this is in its opening stages. Two things that really, I think, came out of the conversation. One, we do have a desire to get standard operating procedure and policies in place in regards to this subject. At the same time, we want to be careful to make sure, because this is such a new policy, that we don't jump the gun and get ourselves into a situation that we don't cover all of the possible situations where we, the policy would need to cover. So we don't want to be, we don't want to put out a policy that is, I called some other policies boilerplate. We don't consider this one boilerplate. It's important to us to get it right for the students. So we're going to be talking about this, I'm sure, for some time. But again, we don't want to take too long and keep ourselves from addressing it. So as this progresses, I'll, we'll keep coming and updating the board and the public on where we are. And eventually, sometime, hopefully soon, we'll have a policy of our own that we're ready to review and then adopt.
Any comments or questions, or are we ready for new business? Hearing none. New business. Who's first? Hey, Patty?
I would just like to invite everybody. And if you haven't heard already, tomorrow night is the Western Center Senior Recognition. At Pots Grove, we have 48 students that are going to be recognized. It'll be at seven o'clock at the middle school, our middle school. We get to have it home this year. And there's quite, I have a list of the awards, which I can't really reveal, but our kids really have done really well. Again, just really proud of all the students. So tomorrow night's our senior recognition.
Thank you, Mrs. Graham. Anybody else? Mrs. Charafal?
Yeah. I meant to bring this up at our meeting two weeks ago and completely slipped my mind, and I apologize for that. But I did get an email from a parent, and I don't know whether everybody else got it or if she singled me out for any particular reason. But she just was letting me know that she has a daughter that is attending preschool and there's a pre-K program. It's in a church school. She's been there the last two years and she's doing very well. Her pre-K teachers recommend her to attend kindergarten this year, but she will not be five until October 3rd, which is not in our board policy. And so her question was, "I would like to know if she could attend kindergarten for the school year 2016-17? And if possible, please share the policy on early admission." So I know we don't have a policy on early admission. Just bringing this information to everyone, as far as I know, I don't know whether this has ever come up before, at least since I've sat on the board, since I've been here.
It's come up before, and, you know, we've been advised that, obviously, we don't have to provide this and that it's not recommended that we open up a can of worms, which is why we have a board policy with a deadline on it and a set date. And obviously, we've had parents before that think their child is very high achieving. And as you said, this is a report with no, no data, no documentation, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't entertain this.
Right. So I'll just.
It wouldn't be our, my recommendation.
Should, you know, I mean, maybe you should refer the parent to, to the administration if they have further questions. You know, the irony is, is you get it, you get the parents that want their students to start early, but now there's also a trend for parents to hold students who are eligible for kindergarten back an entire year. So, you know, that's easier for us, obviously, than what they're asking for. Anybody else?
A couple of questions sparked from the four-year information section. First, you let us know that you will be asking for us to approve a demographic study, which I think is wise. Just asking about your thoughts on timeline. I know they can take quite a while to complete. And just, you know, will it give us enough time to plan a quarter?
Yeah, I would say the plan would be to bring a, bring a proposal to you for contracting in the fall, probably early September timeframe. My understanding of the impetus for this would be the large development that's being proposed in Lower Pots Grove Township. My understanding is that development cannot be started until the interchange in Limerick is reconfigured. So I'm not, I'm not thinking there's any imminent construction that's going to take place with that, with that project. So I think the timeframe of early fall would be fine.
What do you mean, contract in early fall? Contract for what?
To have a, an organization do the demographic study for us. We would typically, I'm going to go out and get some, some pricing. There's a couple, we had, we've had organizations do it for us in the past, but there's some others in the area that I would like to get some pricing on and come back to you with a proposal in, in September.
Again, I don't understand, why do we have to contract out? When I was at OJ Roberts, the Director of People's Services oversaw the demographic study and did it quite frequently. With the number of staff we have, why can't we be like the average school district and do our own demographic study?
Mr. Parker, I can guarantee you that the average school district doesn't do their own demographic survey. In fact, I attended a meeting at the intermediate unit last week, and the Montgomery County Commission presented their demographics overview and showed the work that they're doing for certain districts. And several of the districts did speak highly of their work and also indicated that not only did they have them do the study, but they also paid for a second consultant to do the study and then compared the results and were explaining that they were satisfied with Montgomery Counties, which we may be able to get at a reduced rate. And I mentioned that to Dave when he came back from the meeting that he attended. So, you know, we're going to take a look at that and see if we can have them come out and talk with us.
My last question, just clarification.
Bill, 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 let me, let me, can I add?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
In conjunction with your thing, this demographic study, I just want to make sure, see if I'm understanding it correctly. Is this going to include these new developments, that Upper Pots Grove, Lower Pots Grove, and everybody's approving?
Yeah, the, the process would be that the, whoever does the, the study would reach out to all the municipalities, find out what developments are on, on the docket and what they expect to see coming down the road in five, 10 years. And they would do enrollment projections based on a variety of assumptions. They typically give us a low estimate, a mid-range estimate, and a high-range estimate to project what our, our student enrollment change might look like.
All right. One of the things I want to say, and I talked a little bit about this with Dave, Mr. Nester, a little bit earlier in regards to, I do think this board needs to get more involved when it comes to these regional planning and the council meetings and such. I understand they have their job and they have to do what is necessary, but we also, as a board, also need to make sure that we're present or at least have a voice, which we do supposedly. We actually, they have area for us to make a statement if someone wants to go and such like that. But we do need to start working in conjunction with these, the townships. I don't understand, maybe it's because I'm new and I have not been in part of this since December only, I don't understand how a, the commissioners will approve developments of 2,000 kids and the school district has pretty much no say and doesn't say anything at all. Or doesn't even bother to go to the commissioners' meetings and say, "Hey, look, you know what you guys are doing here." I don't understand how we're not part of it. And I'm hoping that maybe we can develop some type of partnership with the townships.
Well, I think, Mr. Leach, you raise a good point. You know, I guess the question is, is, is the school board not attending meetings that it should? And apparently, based on, on the information that Mr. Brandt so kindly supplied us on Facebook, the answer seems to be yes. Is that the job of somebody here that is being dropped? For example, on the legislative liaison, does that mean I'm supposed to be attending these meetings? If so, then I have dropped that ball. Or do we need to appoint somebody who can take responsibility to, to attend them? I think, I think that I'm in agreement with you, that, that given that these meetings have a, a place on their agendas for, for the school district to make comment and the school district doesn't show, really looks bad. It is bad. It's more than looks bad. So, you know, I guess we could ask for a volunteer to start attending. It's a monthly meeting on Wednesdays, correct? You know?
I believe, Evan, you would know better. I think it's the last Wednesday of the month?
Fourth Wednesday.
Fourth Wednesday of the month. Now unfortunately, I would gladly volunteer going forward, but I can't be there tomorrow because I'm here today. I'm going to the Music League on Thursday and then Friday I have another event.
Welcome to the world of being on the school board. So you're volunteering for all subsequent meetings?
I can't say all, but I will do my best to attend going forward.
That would be great, Mr. Leach. Is there anybody that can go tomorrow? I cannot. Is this on the agenda of that planning commission, to your knowledge, Mr. Brink? Yeah. Okay. Well, I'll look at my schedule and see if there's any way I can free up the time. Anyway, anybody else?
Yeah, I had two small pieces, and these are very.
I just wanted to go back to the demographics thing really quick. I remember being at a meeting around the time, I believe it was the Ringing Rocks renovation. And I remember a guy standing up there giving us demographics and telling us that the, the 10-year outlook was basically a 0% raise in student population. I'd love to know who that guy was, because he was really wrong, really wrong. I mean, he basically said, "You know, we don't need to change a thing. Keep all the same amount of classrooms, keep the same amount of everything, because you have very little chance of any new students entering this district."
Hasn't our growth been relatively flat since about four, five years?
Actually, our, our student population has been relatively flat for the last 15 or 20 years. It's, even with all the additional development in the, in the region and in our community specifically, it hasn't translated into a significant increase in students.
Well, I'm no mathematician, but, but I actually think that that person's projections might prove to be right, because when, by the time they finish this project and start actually selling the houses and families start moving in with, with school-aged kids, I'm betting we're four, five years down the road. So if it's been, if that was about four or five years ago, and we're talking four or five years down the road, then that's about 10 years. I mean, I see your point.
That's true. That's true. You're right. You're right. But I just see this as, you know, it seems imminent almost. You know, it feels like it's going to happen tomorrow because everyone's talking about it.
I, I realize that, but realistically, they got to sell the homes, first of all.
True. Got to build them first.
You know, they got to build them, they got to sell them. You know, my development, which was the most, one of the most recent developments in the Pots Groves, started in 2008, '07, and only finished completely two years ago. It took a long time. Of course, there was a little economic problem in the middle of it, but just a little what. So one would hope that it would go faster, but then maybe one would hope that it wouldn't. I also personally wonder about the ability to sell homes in that particular location. So I'm not saying we should ignore it. We do have to plan for it. We do have some big concerns. We have a middle school that's at capacity. I personally believe Lower is at capacity. And, you know, we're going to have to deal with it. But I don't think we have to deal with it next week, so.
All right. I have two small items. The first one, I just wanted to congratulate all the new National Honor Society members that joined this past week. For those of us that were in attendance, it actually was a very beautiful ceremony, very professionally done. The students that are going to be coming in, I tell you, they have some big shoes to fill from those four seniors that are going shoes to fill from those four seniors that are going to be outgoing, uh, that took over the National Honor Society. So, good luck for them. Uh, I also do, and I'm going to do one self-promotion here on our, uh, school awards. This is the Booster Club Awards. I sent everybody an invitation, of course. I want you all to get, come as much as, as you can. It's free to you guys. Come on down. Uh, we pay for it. A couple of things on the self-promotion is, uh, we really revamped the Booster Club this year. We actually, after the year is done, we, uh, donated back about twenty-five hundred dollars in equipment. We donated the shooter shirts for the basketball team, the travel gear for the Girls LAX. Uh, and we also covered other, through about three or four other teams in our goal to cover every team in a three-year span, three and a half-year span is what we're trying to work out. Uh, and we were able to do that through a lot of different new promotions that we're doing that you may have seen of. So, come on down. You'll enjoy some good food, some entertainment. It's all blast.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Uh, who else?
Question and clarification, uh, from the FYI section, talking about nursing. We do have at least one, uh, full-time nurse in every building. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
And so, there's talk of additional nursing during certain busy hours for diabetic visits, med visits, that kind of thing. I'm presuming that ultimately that would be basically paid back through MA funds or do we submit for that when parents approve?
No, they wouldn't be. This, this process for me actually started in two thousand and fourteen. Uh, I was hired in, in December. Didn't get here until January and the budget season had already kicked off. There was a need then with the current people services staff to, to try to, to, uh, help take care of the, uh, the time at West. The budget season had already, it was rolling in full gear, being new to the position. I didn't feel as, you know, prudent to, to really bring that up to, uh, bring it up at that particular time. And then unfortunately for us, uh, the, the fall fourteen and fifteen, we were, we were in tran, we were in transition again with people services, but the nurses had, had constantly, had presented that to their, their leadership as far as a need, especially at West. So, this year, I, once again, we had, we had the conversations with the nurse and the Director of People Services. Uh, and then, of course, we had the, the transition with people services. But, uh, I continued to have the conversations with the nurse to find out, you know, what specifically was needed. Uh, the different state mandates that occur in K-two and three, five, of course, and seven, the middle school's a big component, too, uh, with that, uh, with that state mandates, is the time to do the paperwork. Not only, not only do the nurses need the time to take care of, of hot times during that lunch recess and all the medical responsibilities that we have, they're also responsible to fill out the state mandate, mandated, uh, paperwork that our certified school nurses need to then go back and check. So, uh, there's, there's been gaps at West. And then another, I guess another component of this is with field trips and the services that we need to provide our students, uh, it's important that we have nurses on staff that know our kids and can, can make those runs. And also, I mean, you hate to mention this, you know, but we do have nurses who are absent. And when they're absent, we then have to try to use substitute nurses or use services to help fill that void. Or take, uh, part-time nurses from other, from others' buildings. So, um, we felt this was, you know, they, they helped us with this plan. One of the nurses was even willing to decrease her hours because it, it, they, they got together, uh, and said, hey, you know what? I, I would work less. The need is, is greater at West. So, um, that was a way for us to, to come back to the board. And again, it's for discussion at this point, because I wanted to give you an opportunity to look at it. But for, uh, us to fill this void, uh, at the least, the least impact to the district.
Mr. Nestor, can you talk to us a little bit about medical assistance submission? Are these, uh, I know for things like speech and different things like that, we could submit if the parent signs off. Can't we do that for, um, students that have to get their sugar checked and things like that?
Yes, but the, the, the amount that you would be able to charge for a school nurse that sees a hundred kids a day would be so miniscule. Uh, and they would have to keep time, detailed time sheets to document that for this four minutes, I was working with this child who's, uh, eligible for MA. So, uh, you know, something like a school, like a, uh, speech therapist or, or a one-on-one aide that's doing some, some more routine medical things with the students on a, um, set time schedule, that's a lot more, uh, realistic to expect people to, to track their time in detail for.
Uh, if there's nobody else, I have one more thing and, uh, hopefully, uh, it'll be short. Um, I wanted to report to the board that, uh, I had the pleasure to participate in, uh, interviews as part of my role in the Personnel Committee, uh, for the, uh, open position we have Supervisor of People Services. Uh, and, uh, I found it to be a, uh, both educational and useful process to, to be sitting in the room. Uh, I'm happy to report that, uh, out of the eight or so candidates that we met with, uh, we recommended three to go forward to round two. Um, and I personally believe that, uh, that our next, uh, employee is in that group of three. Uh, I'm really quite confident about that. Uh, so it was very useful to me. But, uh, but one of the things that, beyond that, that I wanted to, uh, just mention at this point, although there really isn't a lot of time, uh, from a budgetary perspective, um, is, uh, as I went and listened to all the questions and all the discussions about all the things that our current people services staff of one plus temporary are, are doing, um, I kept asking myself if we're asking too much of two people, um, based on the, not just the scope and quantity of work that has to be done in this department, but the ramifications from a cost perspective, um, of cutting corners, uh, as it relates to, uh, the potential for outplacements, lawsuits, uh, judgments, et cetera. Um, and I also, uh, would, was noting, as I was thinking about all these things, that, uh, our special education department is, has been, uh, um, you know, consistently reducing their budget over the last few years. Not because, uh, through reducing their workload, but by strategically bringing back students from outplacements and reaping some fairly significant savings. So, all that as a preamble to, uh, to something I don't believe I've ever asked the administration before, uh, with, um, in my three years on the board, uh, which is, uh, do we have enough staff in special education? Um, and, um, I did a little hunting and pecking around some neighboring and other districts. And a lot of the school districts in our area have at very least a director and two supervisors, one for elementary and one for, uh, secondary. Um, so I don't want to spend money we don't need to spend, uh, especially when we're pushing for a zero percent budget. And I don't want to give up on that. But I at least wanted to ask the question of you. And I'm not expecting you to even give an answer right now to this question, but it, um, it's an area where, where you can be penny-wise and pound foolish. I, I think that we all agree on that. And I'm just asking if we're possibly being a little too penny-wise in this area. So, you don't need to comment if you don't want to at this point, Mrs. Fiola, but I, I did just want to make sure I said it in front of the whole board. Um, as I went through the process, it just kept hitting me over the head that, that's the case, or that might be the case.
Mark, I just have a question. And when you were doing that research and looking at the, where they had, uh, one for lower and one for the upper divisions, what size districts were they? Were they the same-sized districts? Were we talking bigger districts?
Well, the bigger districts have more than that. So, I was trying to find like-sized districts. And I can share some of the information that, uh, that I've found. Um, because you're right. I mean, you know, you don't want to compare yourself to a district like Springfield that's three times our size. Um, uh, you know, but they have a lot more than two. So, I don't know what the for, the right formula is. I'm not suggesting we don't have the right formula. I'm just asking if we do have the right formula, just to be clear. So, anybody else?
Good morning.
Um, what's left on this agenda?
Nothing.
Nothing on the agenda? Uh, any public left for comment? We do have somebody.
No.
My name is Mason McIntyre. Uh, this is my first year here at Pots Grove High School. Um, I really like this school so far, so that's pretty good. But, uh, um, so I have, um, applied for the Student Board Representative position. Um, this is my third board meeting that I've been to, and I really enjoy them, which is, uh, pretty rare. But, um, but, uh, the Student Representative position, um, I just wanted to thank you all for your consideration of who the next person will or will not be, um, especially considering the jobs that you all have, like the admin, um, and just the school board itself. You guys have really tough jobs. Like, the buck stops here. Um, and I know that it's, it's kind of interesting to sit and watch, you know, how, you know, how this stuff goes. But at the end of the day, you guys really do care about the students and their parents and you're, you know, involved with the school. And, you know, people take shots at you guys for not really any reason. And, um, there's just some, you know, personal things that are, you know, said and people don't really know what they're talking about sometimes. So, I just wanted to thank you guys for the job that you did and are doing. Um, say yes.
Mason, what grade are you in?
Tenth grade.
Well, uh, thank you for, uh, for your kind words and, uh, for, uh, coming up and speaking to us today. And, uh, glad you rejoined, um, uh, the school and, uh, and, uh, that you enjoy these meetings, uh, is remarkable. Uh, I'm not sure all of us would agree, uh, but, uh, but really, thank you. And, uh, you know, uh, hopefully, we'll be speaking to you further, uh, as part of the process of considering you for the, uh, Student Board seat.
I just want to say, uh, congratulations and good luck on this. But do we have an idea of how many, do we have our applications in and everything like that? Are we going to bring that to the board soon?
Uh, yes, we will be. In fact, Dr. Ziegler and I will be, uh, meeting this week to finalize that list. And then, uh, we'll be setting up, I think he's been in correspondence with, uh, Mr. Rubinowitz, about setting that up, uh, either before the next meeting or prior and on another night. But we're, we're on target and on time with that. Thank you.
I'd like to say Mason is an excellent Ralphie sitter. He, he watches Ralphie for us when, when we're away for the day.
Not right now.
No, not right now. But Ralphie adores him.
Ralphie is tough to, to spend time with, not. He's such a cute dog. So, all right. Anything else? Hearing nothing. Meeting-